Twenty-fifth, 2017. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First thing up is order of business. Mr. Kessel.
President Decker, I do have two changes or recommendations for changes for tonight's agenda. The first is an addition. I'd like to add the 10th and 21st Street East Trail to the engineering portion of the And also, under the timetable agenda at 4:45, we have several of the abatements that can be pulled, all of those listed for Fredrickson and Byron.
Okay.
Those can be pulled from the agenda. That would conclude my recommendations.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kessel on the agenda? I mean, the order of business? Now, I'd look for a motion to approve the order of business.
So move.
We have a motion to approve the order of business in a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kessel or any of the other staff members? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business is approved. Next up is consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss? Now, I would look for a motion.
So move.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, consent agenda is approved. We have some timetable items at 4:45, and we'll move right into the non-timetable. First thing up is the convention and visitor bureau. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Decker. The convention and visitors bureau has experienced a opening on their board. Member Doris Callahan has vacated her position on the CBB board, and they would like to see Mr. Ryan Gillick from Stark Development Corporation fulfill the term that Ms. Callahan has vacated. That term would end in September of 2018, and so it's our recommendation to concur with the CBB. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel on the CBB appointment? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to approve Mr. Gillick as a member of the CBB.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Commissioner Altman's is our representative to the CBB. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to-
Sure, I can add to this if we want. Doris Callahan retired and moved to Fargo, so we were left with an opening on the board. Each board member brought forward two names to the board, and we went through each of those names. Ryan's kept coming up on top. I think he'll be a great addition to the CBB board, and I look forward to serving with him on that committee.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Altman. Okay, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Gillick is approved as a CBB board member. Next item up is the HR manual. Ms. Kreip.
Hi, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1637 to come before the commission. The ordinance is drafted in the packet, shows all the changes that were agreed upon and vetted through staff, civil service, and then the employee representatives as well. The one issue that remains outstanding is whether or not, what we're going to do with that employee benefit on the insurance on retirement. I believe Mr. Kessel's been working with the employee representatives to find a suitable solution, but I don't think one has materialized quite yet. They're still kind of going through that process. So as it is drafted in your packet and as the ordinance is presented, everything with the retirement benefit would just stay as-is, and that issue would be continued to be worked on by staff and administration, and it could be addressed at a later time. The other option is, as you've seen in the memo, what the staff had recommended initially, prior to talking to Mr. Kessel, was just to add the 30 years in as an option for that retirement benefit, so it matches their pension.
So Ms. Kreip, if we approve as-is, that is satisfactory right now, and Mr. Kessel, to the city employees?
Correct. President Decker, we've held, we've met with the citizen, or excuse me, the staff on this a couple of different times, the executive team, the leadership team, and there's a lot of diversity of thought that remains. And so it's my recommendation that we simply leave it the way it was originally, and then we'll address this at a later time. The reason that we're making the recommendation that way is because we have to implement our new Kronos software, and we want to make that effective January 1st. And that's when all of these HR policies, this manual becomes effective, is on the 1st. So it's continuing to delay the Kronos implementation, and we are paying fees to Kronos without implementation, so it seems like a waste of money and efficiency right now. So we'd like to revise it in 2018 and bring it back to you, that particular section.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel or Ms. Kreip on the HR manual or any other staff?
Mr. President, I move we approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve 1637 as presented.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1637 is approved and passed. Next up, we have a commission meeting ordinance. Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Decker. This is the item that was under report at our last city commission meeting. The concept here is changing city commission meetings to the first and third Tuesdays of every month instead of the first and third Mondays of every month. There is an attached calendar that would show when those meetings would be. There are some exceptions, because this would take place in February of 2018 rather than January. You've already approved moving those January meeting days to the 9th and 23rd, if I'm not mistaken. So those won't be affected by the ordinance. It would start in February instead of January. So the ordinance itself takes that into consideration and would change those meetings to Tuesdays at 4:30.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Kessel?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, and this ordinance number is?
It would be ordinance number 1646.
1646, okay. So we have a motion to approve 1646 with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Before I vote here, I guess my vote is for an aye and the ordinance. First reading is approved. Just wondering if, we'll have the public hearing on the next.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Kessel, you're up. Endeavor debt payment.
Thank you, President Decker. This is an item that was discussed at the budget meeting that we held, and the concept here is taking the commission desires, paying down debt as quickly as we possibly can, and extending that to fruition. So I wanted to kind of walk you through a little bit about the endeavor debt that we currently have, why we have it, and then what recommendation to pay this off and why we're making that recommendation. So first of all, we have two contracts with Endeavor, and we actually entered into these with Dakota Prayer Refinery. It has since sold, and so the new owner is Endeavor. They inherited these two contracts with the City of Dickinson. The first is a wastewater treatment line, and the second is an industrial water line. So what these lines essentially do is create a circle between the City of Dickinson and Endeavor, and we'll show you a map here shortly. The amount of dollars that we're talking about is, for the wastewater line and overcharges, was about $3.2 million, and for the industrial reuse line, it was $2.6 million. So the industrial water line goes from our wastewater treatment plant, which is the new plant on the south side of Dickinson, all the way out to the Endeavor facility way out west. This line was built because we provide reuse industrial water to Endeavor. They use that in their purposes, cooling and whatever they need, and we charge them, of course, a fee to do that. The, excuse me, the line sizing that they required was eight inches in diameter, and we wanted to be able to transfer the capacity, the existing capacity of our wastewater treatment plant through that line to customers. So we use the reuse water, we send it through the line, and then we have had several contracts where they have now created a reservoir, which then is pumped for, predominantly, we've sold it for fracking purposes. What it does is it, the intent was to do that, to keep trucks and other large-scale vehicles out of Dickinson and not providing that level of pounding on our roads that we normally would get with that many trucks. And so to transfer three point, or 3 million gallons of water, we had to have a 16-inch line instead of an 8-inch line, so we had to upsize it. We pay the refinery $2 per thousand to use that line, and it's called a wheeling fee. And that wheeling fee will always exist unless we buy that line out completely. What we're paying today is just the oversize of the line from the 8-inch to the 16. So the, once this is paid off, this debt is retired, the wheeling fee goes down to 25 cents a thousand. So it's a very significant drop in our cost, which means that any future contracts for reuse water will receive a 1.75 per thousand increase in revenue that we can retain. We've sold 175 million gallons of reuse water, which has resulted in payments of about $350,000 to Endeavor. That's the contracts that we've already had in place since 2013 when this was initiated. Our anticipation of continuing to use that revenue stream to pay that debt off, it would take us until 2028 to make our final payment, and it would cost us around $700,000 in interest if we continued to pay the debt to the full term of 2028. So the wastewater line, then, is, goes from the refinery north and then west to our west lift station. This line also was oversized, and it includes some costs for the intermediate lift station that's represented by that oval. So the reason that we engaged a higher or an increased pipe size was to service the west Dickinson area or the anticipated growth in the west Dickinson area. So this map is meant to represent kind of the west plan. We actually had an addendum to our comprehensive plan, and we called it the west area plan, and this is the area that could be served by the upsizing of this line. So we own the line that does go, that we just showed on the map, and the way that it's being, we're paying, or that Endeavor is paying, is through the treatment fees. And we're just applying their treatment fees to the overbilled cost. And right now, continuing, assuming that all things stay similar as they are today, that bill would be paid off in 2022 and would cost us an additional $200,000 in interest. Both of these loans are at 6% interest. It is our highest interest in terms of long-term debt, not necessarily our short-term debt that we have for vehicle leases and such. The other piece of this puzzle, and then I'm going to ask Deputy Administrator Carlson to talk about our debt picture so that you can see what making the payment would look like. We presented this building improvement fund debt at a previous city commission meeting. We only had three commissioners that night, so we wanted to bring it back to the table. But we have $1.5 million in the building improvement fund, and our recommendations for use of those dollars was to pay off two additional loans, the ESG and the revolving loan fund related to wastewater improvement. They're both rather small debt at $350,000 approximately each, but if we did both of these things, we'd be retiring about $5.5 million in debt. The other uses are up there. Just an update quick on the parking lot. We've decided to wait and make, pave that or hard-surface that in the spring, simply because the cost from concrete to asphalt was so high that it's our best bang for our buck is to just wait and do asphalt in the spring. So that cost should be lower than the 170 that's up on the screen. The training simulator is on the, the police department simulator that you heard from Chief Dossinger. The airport is a grant that we are recommending to make sure that the airport has enough dollars to get to the 2019 legislative session. And then the library improvements and potential parking was on the addition that the library is contemplating.
Mr. Kessel, let's back up. The regional airport, do you call that a grant or loan?
Grant.
Okay.
Yep, as it was originally conceived, it was a grant. That also means there's a grant that the county would give, and it's actually almost double what that grant is. So with that, that is the, that's what we're talking about today, is paying off those two Endeavor accounts. I'm going to let Deputy Administrator Carlson kind of walk you through the remainder of those slides.
Okay.
I do have to depart the meeting, so she'll be the one to ask questions of. And she's well-versed.
I think so. Thank you. Okay. With that, I wanted to give a, just a slide showing what our GPT revenue, this is our gross production.
Linda, before you get into it-
Oh, go ahead.
President, there, it's 4:45, and I didn't know if you wanted to wait.
Oh, maybe we'll wait.
Thank you for the reminder. So engrossed in all the dollars. We do have a 4:45 timetable, and Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission. The November deadline coming for the 2015 abatements, we did get quite a few of them in here at the end of the year. Wanted to let you know that we did finally get an opinion back from, from the district court in regards to the Sierra Ridge and the Microtel properties. The decision of the judge was to affirm the decision that Stark County had in accepting the values that this council and the assessing department set. So that's good news to us. Menard Design Understand is still in district court, and we may have some others, you know, from previous abatements that may be headed that way, but I haven't heard anything additional to give to you at this time. And I believe it was Commissioner Friedrich, several months ago, at one of these abatement hearings, had commented, you know, about the difficulty of keeping track of the changing market between the years, especially when we're talking 30 months from the time the Board of Equalization sets a value to the final date that they can file for an application. And it certainly isn't difficult, or only difficult for us. It's also difficult for property owners, as we had two apartments that had filed for 2015 for this evening, who had actually filed and was heard before this commission at the 2016 Board of Equalization. And so they'd forgot that they'd filed already, so that was part of the reason why those were removed. We also have other property owners who forgot that they had sat down with Mr. Ayler and myself prior to the 2015 Board of Equalization, and went over that value, and in some instances, you know, what changes were made that were agreed to, and now we're 30 months down the road, and they're asking for an abatement on that 2015 value that they already agreed to. So we'll hear more about that as we go along. But, you know, what's changed in that 30 months? Well, we have more doom and gloom, you know. Vacancies are high, rents are low, you know, the oil's busted, and things are just in horrible state here in Dickinson. All you have to do is look at the news throughout the nation. Who knows better what's going on here than we do ourselves? But I want to point out on, on those two apartments, that the one that's, ones that filed in 2015 already, the value that we had, and we heard this in May of 16, the value that was set at that time was $7,284,000 on one of them. The application for abatement that year was $6,780,000. They filed this year, and granted, they're different tax reps, but the value asked for this year was $1,530,000. What in the world happened in 2015 that that value would have changed? Well, nothing did. I mean, the property's worth what it's worth in 2015, but the changing market conditions has prompted them to come back asking a much lower value. And the same with one of the other apartments, where we had a $33 million valuation on. They asked for $29 million in '16, and then this year, they filed asking for 6.3 million. So I mean, that's significant decrease, and we're just seeing the applicants ask for, you know, the bottom of the barrel. Don't want to delve too deeply into Mr. Royals from, well, we just heard the county level here a couple of weeks ago, but he had his appraisals come in after we heard it here, and there was one property he had suggested a value of $100,000 on, and his appraiser came back at $750,000. Both of those were lower than what I had on it, but, you know, significant difference in values there. And one thing I'd like to see moving forward is maybe contacting our legislators and asking that not necessarily that dates change, that we don't allow property owners to have the opportunity to abate their values, but maybe the abatement should come with all the information that's required. You know, the appraisals have already been done, there's one value that's supported on the application, you know, by the appraisal as well, something that I can look at at the time it's filed. And we're not looking at two different values, one on the abatement, one on the appraisal, and then, oh, well, we can be somewhere in between. I mean, that's, it takes a lot of time from everybody's data to try and to do that. Moving on into our abatements, I want to start with the property of Mr. Kirchner's, and that would be, oh, the address. Give me just a moment here, I'm filing my papers around here. 1785 First Street West. Now, we heard these in August, and we denied the 2015 valuation, but the request was, in regards to 2016, Mr. Kirchner had stated, you know, his income dropping substantially, and I'd waited several months for the information, left a couple of voicemails for him, sent some emails, and finally got ahold of him last month. And he'd sent over an email that's in the, in the packet there, and essentially, his 2015 rent rolls was unchanged from 2014, save for maybe the last six or, four or six weeks of the year where he'd lost a couple of tenants. So certainly not enough to drastically change the income from 2015 and the valuation that was set in 2016. And that, with that additional information, then, is my recommendation that we deny the 2016 application for 1785 First Street West.
So he hasn't given us any other supporting information since the last time we spoke to him?
He did not. He sent over this, that one email that I have in your pocket, or in your packet there, I'm sorry, stating that the same rents were in place for 2014 and '15. I don't have month-by-month records, but I can tell you that the total rent per month was about $12,990. That number doesn't help me out at all.
Right. I see that. Okay. Thank you. Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I move we deny the abatement request.
We have a motion to deny. Before I take a second, are there any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on this before we proceed? None? Okay, so we have a motion to deny.
Second.
And a second. Any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny the abatement is approved. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Okay, the second set of properties we have were submitted by Paradigm Company. They're the Friedman Apartments, and if, in your front packet, you should have a table, a blue table like this. I apologize, the order's a little bit different on this table than what they are in your packet and on the agenda, but if you see the Paradigm, you'll see the Friedman Apartments. Those apartments were the ones constructed by Roers over in State Edition that they sold in 2014. The applicant did supply us with an appraisal. The appraised date on this report is December 19th, 2016, so we're well beyond the dates that we would have been looking at information. I will continue to refer to this as we, we do our valuations, but there's information in here that just was not available to me at the time that the '15 and '16 valuations were set. In addition, when we talk about forgetfulness, in 2014, these properties sold for roughly $169,000 a unit. The applicant for 2015, and this is, would be the sales year, the valuation set for the year after, actually, we lagged that year behind, they're asking for a value of $67,000. I do not understand how they can ask for a value of $67,000 for the year considered the year that they actually sold at 169.
Mr. Hirschfeld, before you continue, just, are there any representatives from any of these properties in the, in the audience that you know of?
For these properties, there are not.
Okay.
For the last one of the night, the ones from Whitfleet, I do see that the gentleman from Whitfleet is here, so he'll be here to represent his, but-
All right, thank you.
Any questions from up to this point?
You're complete with Paradigm?
And the, yeah, and the 2015 valuation, I mean, they sold for $6 million, they're asking for 2.5. You know, based on the year that they sold, I just can't, you know, support that and ask you to deny the values for '16 on, on all eight of these.
Mr. Hirschfeld, we have to take each property separately, right, with these?
If you're, I believe if you're making a recommendation to deny them all, we could group them, but if you were to change the value, we'd have to do it individually.
Okay. And then Walmart is also under Paradigm, right?
That is correct.
And since that is a differ type of, I guess it's commercial sales?
It, it is different, so I mean, we can leave it for discussion after this.
Okay.
And besides the '15 valuation that we have for these apartments, we also have an abatement for 2016 as well, so I think it's probably best to discuss the '16 separately.
Okay, then, continue with, we'll continue with '15. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the '15 for Paradigm?
I'd just like to offer you a summary here, see if I'm on the right track here. So we have the assessed values of 2015, and then we have the requested value of 2015. It looks like they're asking for a decrease of 50 to 60 percent on about every one of those apartment buildings. Our assessed values in 2016 appear to be 10% lower than what they were in our assessed value of 2015, so I think we have adjusted for some type of decrease there in sales or whatever, even though we don't have enough sales to justify anything tonight, really, as far as it goes, this type of property, correct?
You're absolutely correct, Commissioner Steiner.
And then the requested value in 2016 is the same, basically the same, what the request for the requested value in 2015, and that, and that looks like it's, holds true for two, four, six, all eight pieces of the property. I didn't look at the Walmart one, but for the integrated apartments, that's what it appears to me. I don't think our numbers have changed much. If you want a motion on the property number 1673-0300-0100, I would give a motion to deny the abatement request.
And just to clarify, Mr. Hirschfeld, you said that we can deny for all the apartments?
Yes.
Okay. But that'll just be for 2015?
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions before I ask for a second on the Paradigm Apartments?
Just a question for you. To speed this up, unless there's any commissioner here that has a difference to the 100, 200, 300, and then the 1674s, et cetera, I can make my motion and spell out each one individually?
That's correct.
In one motion?
That's correct. As long as you identify the properties.
Okay. So I'd ask if you ask the other commissioners if they have anything they'd like to...
Any commissioners have any objection to Mr. Steiner grouping the Friedman Integrated Apartments?
No, no objection.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Steiner.
Mr. President, I move we deny the abatement request for property ID number 1673-0300-0100,
We have a motion to deny the abatement.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny the abatement is approved. Mr. Hirschfeld, 2016?
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2016 values, and as Mr. Steiner pointed out, they are asking for the same value in 16 as they are in 15. I failed to mention that those values came from the appraisal report, and that, again, that report was dated December of 2016, so well after the time period that we were reviewing data, and for that reason, it's less accurate. And I wanted to backtrack a little bit, and I'd sent over the IAAO report for the Big Box that I'd asked you to read, but I do want to read that if I can into the record. But it's from page seven of the report for Big Box that came from the International Association of Assessing Officials. It's section four titled "Real Property Rights in Real Estate." It says, "Ad velorem tax valuation is a legal construct. The specific laws, regulation, and case law of a jurisdiction control what is valued and how it is valued. This is one reason there is a jurisdictional exception in the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice. And because ad velorem tax valuation is a legal construct, interpretation of the law and regulations is controlled by legal analysis, not by appraisal analysis. Thus, in some jurisdictions, what is required for ad velorem valuation may not be consistent with fee appraisal theory and practice. The appraiser must know exactly what a jurisdiction means by fee simple estate and what encumbrances must be taken into account." And essentially what that means is, the assessor has to follow rules set by the taxing entity, in this case, you know, the state of North Dakota has its rules that I'm required to follow. And essentially, when you have an appraisal come before us, it may be a good appraisal, but it may not have been completed in the same manner and having to take the same focus with the data that I did. And so you're going to come up with two different numbers. When you're going to come up with two different numbers, irregardless, because they're an opinion, but when you start from two widely different points of view, you know, it's very difficult that you come to an agreement. And that's what we have here with these properties. I mean, they're a year or two behind what the market segment was that I needed to value, and they also take trending into account, you know, with the increase in vacancies, decreasing rents. I mean, we recognize that, but I'm not able to fully use that in my valuation the way that the fee appraisers did. And so we end up with a valuation that's quite wide, and we heard Mr. Royal at our last abatement hearing delve into that quite deeply. So I don't want to dig, go into the woods too far again, but just as a point of reference, why I'm not able to better show a value that the appraiser does, or that the fee appraiser does. But getting back to these 2016 valuations, again, they're asking the same value in 16 as in 15. It comes from this report that is beyond the data that I had. And as Mr. Steiner did point out, we did decrease values 10% to structure to apartments, so we're recognizing that change, and we made a change, as large a change as we were able to within the constraints of what the state of North Dakota allows with their sales ratio analysis. Based upon that, my recommendation is to deny the 2016 values for the Friedman Apartments as well.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Friedman Apartments?
Mr. Hirschfeld, so our assessed value for 2015 is $25,382,000, and they're requesting a value of $9 million.
That's on the Walmart.
That's on the Walmart, we're still on the apartments though.
Yeah, no, we're still on Paradigm for the apartment.
Go ahead. My fault. I'm ahead of you. I'm ahead of you guys.
He jumped, jumped ahead, yeah. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the 2016 valuation?
My only question is, I assume we're going to see this in 17 again? So, I mean, at what point, I mean, explain how we keep looking at this value, because I imagine they're going to ask for an abatement again in 2017.
That certainly is.
And we're not going to have the 30 sales, so where do we, I mean, what are we going to use for numbers?
Well, that's a very good question, Mr. Friedrich. With all the abatements that have come before us, I haven't had the opportunity to delve into that, see where we're at currently. You know, if we're seeing a decrease in value, certainly our tolerance range may be a little different. If we get above that 100 threshold, you know, if we hit 105, 110 with our median, you know, then we've got 20% to play with. But what I'm hoping for with a ruling now from the judge stating that what we've gone through, the valuation that we have, you know, we've done the best job we can have with the information we have, it's not arbitrary or capricious to any one individual property. I mean, in regards to apartments, they're all in the same boat, we're making similar decreases to everybody. And where he affirmed the courts or the Stark County's decision that maybe we'll see some of them back off of this and not move forward, I...
I think you're correct. The ruling from the judge kind of puts an end date and a start date for anything from here forward, unless something drastically changes in the community of Dickinson. Those numbers shouldn't change drastically.
Correct.
But, I mean, what if we see two sales in 2016? I mean, are we going to be able to utilize those numbers, or?
If we fall outside of 30 sales in three years, then I'm able to write appraisal reports to supplement our sales. At that point, I can use, you know, the current data and basically reflect that lower valuation if that's what the market's still showing. You know, I can, you know, visit Minot, visit Williston, or wherever I might be finding sales at, determining what's the active market doing, what are the active cap rates, and then bring that back to the sales ratio analysis. And so, you know, we can better move forward with that data, and I can, you know, choose to utilize hotels or use apartments if we're still short on those. Because in my opinion, we don't have a market for those types of properties right now. I mean, a market is a willing buyer and a willing seller. I mean, we have a price where I'm sure sellers are willing to sell, and where buyers are willing to buy, but they haven't reached a point where they're in agreement yet. And at that, you know, in that circumstance, we have no market.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hirschfeld? Hearing none, I would look for a similar motion. I don't know if Mr. Steiner wants to go through all the numbers again, but a similar motion to either approve or deny the abatements for Friedman Apartments. You want to take a stab?
I make the motion to deny the 2016 assessed, or requested, abatement for 1673-300-0100,
We have a motion to deny the Friedman Apartments' abatement.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved to deny the abatement. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will move on to the Walmart property. The applicant did submit some information, and for Big Box store which are in contention, I mean, IAAO has their recent report. I also sent the link for, Michigan's had quite a bit of activity in their court system with Big Box. But for that large property in this little town, here's the total sum of the information sent to me by the applicant. There's sales of dark stores throughout Minnesota and Wisconsin predominantly, and based off the median sales on that, he arrived at a $45 per square foot valuation opinion that they use as the value in their application. I want to point out that Walmart had a represent, had a tax rep, they have their own tax division, property tax division. And a gentleman by the name of Mr. Fred Bunch used to come around and see me at least once a year, if not twice a year, and we'd discuss the market. He'd bring me information, we'd discuss the validity of his information versus what I was seeing here. And he retired a couple or three years ago, but, and I believe it was him, it might have been somebody else, but Walmart had a representative called in when we were doing our pre Board of Equalization hearing in 2015. That was with Mr. Bob Baylor and myself. We discussed the valuation that was on that property. We had it sent over, or Vanguard sent over the value on that with the four plus 10 grade, and just over $27 million valuation. And after that discussion, you know, we just, the gist of it was that the entrepreneurial profit that was noticed in the market with properties such as apartments, and some of the metal buildings that were being utilized by the oil industry probably didn't reflect what the entrepreneurial profit would be for Walmart. And so we did grade that property down. That's how we elected to decrease that value 10%. And in essence, gave them about a two or two and a half or a million dollar decrease to that value. And at that time, and like I said, that was just prior to the 2015 Board of Equalization, that sat well with them, and they accepted that. And so I find it interesting that, again, and I suppose with the retirement, you know, with change in personnel, that they've come forward now to file that abatement for the same 2015 year that they had accepted the valuation just before the Board of Equalization hearing. That four grade that we have on the Walmart now is identical to the four grade that we have on the Menards. We've got two large Big Box buildings. When we talk about arbitrary and capricious, they're valued in a similar manner. The difference will be depreciation due to age, and based upon the methodology, the cost approach that we've used, my opinion is that we make no change to the Walmart property, and that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Hirschfeld, the letter that appears in our folder from Mr. Olson, from what I'm reading here is, he wanted a later date to present this.
He did request a later date. His company received all the Walmarts in North Dakota, so they were filing in Bismarck, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Williston, so they stretched themselves kind of thin. The very day that I heard about this, I told him I wanted to go on tonight, on November 20th. We have a 60-day window to have these heard. The last meeting in December was pretty well a no-go, because that's the night that you clean up the budget and do all of that. The next available date, latest date, would have been the 4th. However, it's very difficult to hear this number of abatements on Monday evening and then try and get those to the county on the 5th. That's when the county wanted to have theirs heard, and so that left the 20th. Another reason to have it as early as possible is the tax director at Stark County and myself were both feeling the pressure of having heard so many abatements, and we're kind of behind on our schedule, and we need to get to valuing next years. And I felt that if we push this back another couple of weeks, that pushes the counties back another month. Now we're into January. If a large sum of information comes in again at the county level the day of without an opportunity to review it, we've seen in the past where they've gone ahead and postponed that, or, you know, tabled it till the next meeting. So now we're into February. February 1 is our valuation date. March 15, I need to be sending notices out for statute. So it's kind of a timing issue where we need to wrap these up and get on with the rest of the business of the assessing department and valuing for 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Walmart property?
Now that you guys have finally caught up to where I was, 15 minutes, well, I'll restate it. The assessed value, $25,382,000. The requested value, it looks like they're using their standard 50 to 60% drop again. They're requesting $9,9,700. That's where they're at now. Again, we did adjust it, like you said, same as Menards last year, we graded down the property and so on. So I don't think we're outside of a standard value for them. I do want to comment on the dark store. I don't know if any of you had a chance to read up on dark stores and so on, but we don't see that much in North Dakota. In fact, I don't know if we see it all in North Dakota. Basically, what it says is, if you're in Detroit or you're somewhere else, and you have stores in Detroit, Michigan, and you have a stores in Dickinson, North Dakota, or South Dakota or somewhere, and the ones in Detroit are ransacked, and they're dark, and they're vandalized, and they're worth nothing, that you can apply, cross-supply that type of value to another one of your stores in another property or state, if I'm correct. I don't know if North Dakota recognizes that. I think it would be a terrible law if they did to recognize that dark store theory when you have, when you have, what do I want to say? When you have business that Dickinson has been in the last few years, let me put it that way, economy compared to an economy in Detroit and so on, you know, I think it'd be grossly unfair to a community like Dickinson if they started implementing dark store theories to Dickinson, North Dakota. So unless someone else has something to say, I'd be, I'd offer to make a motion.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hirschfeld before Mr. Steiner? It's yours, Mr. Steiner?
I'd move to deny property ID 0986-0100-0100.
We have a motion to deny Walmart property abatement.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion to deny the abatement is approved. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will now move on to three hotel properties. They are owned by Mr. Bill Patel here. They're represented by the Robert Hill Law Firm. They did send in a letter that they would be unable to be present tonight to represent these properties. I do have an appraisal for each one of them. The Astoria is the one that's most closely related to the valuation date. That was a March of 2015 appraisal. And he actually brought that appraisal to Mr. Bob Baylor and myself prior to the 2015 Board of Equalization, and we discussed that appraisal. I gave quite a bit of consideration to it, because it's from a local reputable appraisal firm in Bismarck. And essentially, for this property, they're asking for a valuation of $15,500,000, which was the appraised value estimate by the Dakota Appraisal and Mr. Joe Ibock. What we looked at in that appraisal was the property owner's hard costs that he stated to build the Astoria was $24 million. And the appraiser estimated the cost at, was it $23 million? And the appraiser estimated the cost at, was it twenty-three million, seven hundred thousand through Marshall and Swift? And our valuation came back at twenty-two million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand. So we, our cost was just a little bit less than what the hard cost and what the appraiser's estimate was. Now, all things aside, I, I wish more appraisals would have been done the way Mr. Ibock and Dakota Appraisals did this one here. I think it would have helped out some of the apartments in town as well because they didn't shoot for the moon. They realized what can happen in North Dakota during an oil boom and, and they adjusted for that. Now that being said, we, we considered that. And one thing that wasn't taken into consideration in the appraisal, the fee appraisal for this, was the value of the restaurant, bar area, and the, the convention center because it wasn't complete at that time. So recognizing that and the inadequate parking they had at the time, we applied ten percent off lessons to that, which basically, we, we met in the middle between that fifteen million and the twenty-two million at, at a nineteen million dollar valuation. And again, Mr. Patel was there. And we sat down and we, we agreed to that. And therefore, he didn't come before the twenty fifteen board of equalization. However, thirty months down the road, the market's completely changed. You know, income's different, and now, you know, they're filing, trying to get a rebate on those property taxes. And it's my opinion that uh, the valuation was done in a manner similar to, to other apart, uh, to other hotel properties. Uh, our whole system, our whole Kama system is cost-based. This was, the value on this was derived cost-based. And then I want to point out that I did find an error in that going over it, and that is I have neglected to pull that ten percent off lessons off for it being incomplete. I did go out and viewed the property a couple of years ago when it was done and then, for, for whatever reason, did not get in there and make that change. So it's kind of been undervalued, that ten percent here the last two years. And based upon those facts, it would be my recommendation that we make no change to this property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Astoria? That is your recommendation for the twenty fifteen value. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion.
Move to deny abatement for property ID one-zero-zero-zero dash zero-one, zero-zero dash zero-one, zero-one.
Astoria. We have a motion to deny the abatement on the Astoria.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Astoria abatement is denied. Next up is, and that is for twenty fifteen. So we'll go to twenty sixteen?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, for twenty sixteen, the applicant is asking for the same fifteen million, five hundred thousand dollar valuation. Again, that comes from the appraisal. Uh, for the twenty sixteen valuation year, there was no decrease given to any hotel properties that year, and therefore, one was not given to this one. Uh, we did recognize at the time the changing market. However, you know, like all the decreases we've given, they've been bound by the sales ratio analysis. Yeah, so in order to be consistent, to avoid being arbitrary and capricious, uh, the valuation for this is, has remained the same as it has for, for every other hotel property for twenty sixteen. And based upon that, would be my recommendation to deny the twenty sixteen application as well.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the twenty sixteen abatement for the Astoria? Hearing none, I would look for a motion.
Mr. President? Move to deny abatement for assessed value of twenty sixteen. Property ID number one-zero-zero-zero dash zero-one, zero-zero dash zero-one, zero-one, Astoria.
We have a motion to deny the abatement for the Astoria.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Hirschfeld? Now it will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The abatement is denied for the Astoria. Moving on to the Best Western. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before we get into that, as everybody's hearing us make denials up here, and that being my recommendation, I wanted to point out a fact, uh, we've heard ninety, after this evening, we'll have heard ninety abatements. And to date, we've also made over six million dollars worth of corrections to those properties as well. So this isn't just slam dunk, deny everything before us just so we can get as much property tax. You know, I've, I've heard that come from the public. But we really do look at these and bring forth the recommendation that, that honestly reflects the valuation and the work that the assessing department puts in. Uh, in regards to the Best Western, uh, Mr. Patel, excuse me, uh, discussed his Best Western value with us as well. Uh, at that time, I mean, it was one of the nicer hotel properties that was, was in Dickinson. And it had a, a little higher grade on it than what we ended up, uh, putting on that property after we discussed it with him. Mr. Patel's argument was that the material wasn't noticeably better than in any other similar type of, of property. It was just the, the, the decoration, the decorum that it had, you know, made it a more attractive property. And the, Mr. Ayler reviewed that, you know, and a- agreed with him. And so there was a, a decrease in the grade of this property as well, which uh, decreased the, the initial opinion of value from, from Vanguard. And, and after that, Mr. Patel, again, agreed to that value prior to the twenty fifteen board of equalization. However, he's bringing forth a different value now, after thirty months, uh, based on an appraisal that is two years, or would be a year past the twenty fifteen valuation date. And uh, and, and doesn't accurately reflect the, the, the information that was before Vanguard Appraisals or myself at that time. Uh, based upon the fact that we've already made a decrease to this property for, for twenty fifteen prior to the board of equalization accepting the values, that's my recommendation that we deny this change as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? There are no questions, I would look in, for a motion.
Move to deny the abatement request for property number zero-eight, zero, or excuse me, one-zero-zero, zero, zero-one, zero-zero, zero-two, zero-six.
We have a motion to deny the abatement for the Best Western.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny the abatement is approved. Moving on to twenty sixteen, Mr. Hirschfeld?
For twenty sixteen, the applicant's looking for the same two million, five hundred thousand dollar valuation from fifteen. And again, that's based on the, the appraisal. Uh, argument would be the same as what we heard for the Astoria. And the, the recommendation would be to deny a change in value for this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld. Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the twenty sixteen assessed value of the Best Western? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can you give just one manager so I can review?
Mr. Steiner?
Something here. I'm looking at the reconciled values. Uh, the previous, uh, the Best Western, they were using about the price, uh, about seventy-three dollars a square foot. This one here, they're taking down to twenty-one dollars and seventy cents a square foot. I don't think we've seen those type of values or building for fifty years that way.
Well, and we, we haven't seen any sale of a hotel property here in Dickinson, so it makes it very difficult to, you know, to be able to pinpoint what a decrease would be. And the appraisal being from, from twenty sixteen, I mean, the, we're not refle- it's not reflecting the sales that would have been from a marketing period, including data that we'd had. So it's, it's very difficult. I mean, again, I believe it to probably be a good appraisal. It's from, uh, Joe Ibock over at Dakota Appraisals again. And I do intend to spend more time looking at that, but the, the time period doesn't fit the, the same data points that we're required to look at.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
I move we deny abatement request, property ID zero-eight, zero-zero dash zero-two, zero-zero dash zero-four, zero-zero, Motel Six.
I think we jumped. We're still on, we're still on Best Western.
Excuse me. Excuse me, that's correct. Straight here. Okay. Uh, correct that, property ID one-zero-zero-zero dash zero-one, zero-zero dash zero-two, zero-six for the twenty sixteen abatement.
Here we have a motion to deny the twenty sixteen abatement request from Best Western.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion to deny the abatement is approved for the Best Western. Moving on to Motel Six. Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Motel Six also has an appraisal. It was completed this past summer, uh, of twenty seventeen, reflecting the value of two million dollars for, for twenty seventeen. And so again, we're well past any data that would have been available to us. That two million dollar valuation's been added to the abatement application for twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Uh, Mr. Patel was before, uh, Mr. Ayler and myself. And again, just prior to the twenty fifteen board of equalization, uh, he brought umbrage with the value of his property specifically to us having it in an average condition. Upon further review by Mr. Ayler, his recommendation was to change the value that they had submitted by uh, changing the condition from average to poor. That decreased the value from seven point eight million to six point five million dollars, which was accepted by Mr. Patel prior to that twenty fifteen board of equalization and accepted at that point. Here we are thirty months down the road, the market having changed and they're, they're now asking for a two million dollar valuation. Uh, after that, arguments the same for, as it was for Best Western and Astoria. And the recommendation for, from the assessing department would be to deny the application.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Motel Six?
When, when did you have an appraisal from Ibock on this one? What was the?
Twenty seventeen.
And what was the amount?
Two million dollars.
That was what Joe came back in, Ibock came back with?
I, I believe so. I'd pull it up, but I think he, he's done a mall for, for Mr. Patel.
And I realize we're looking at fifteen, but I keep going back. What, what are we gonna do for seventeen when he comes in with that same appraisal? I mean, then how do we address it? I mean, Joe Ibock's pretty reputable appraiser.
Very reputable. But again, we go back to, you know, what I read from the I double A O's report there about jurisdictional, jurisdictional exception. And he's not looking at the data the same way I have to, for number one. I mean, he's going to have a, a very valid appraisal, but it's going to be different in that it, his looks at just the, in this case, the Motel Six property. Whereas we're having to equalize values for all properties. And it's just a completely different methodology. And we'll just have to see, you know, what the sales have, how many sales we have, and what the, the sales ratio ends up being before I can even begin to comment on where we're going to end up.
The thing is, I'm assuming we're not gonna have any sales.
They're, they're thin right now, but I'm hoping.
I would guess it's gonna be zero.
I'm not gonna argue and I'm not gonna bet against you.
So how big of a marketing area can, do we look at then?
If uh...
Yeah, I, I know this because I have some involvement in hotel properties. There's not gonna be a sale in Dickinson, I can assure you of that.
Knowing my data the way I have, we had thirty sales from fifteen and sixteen.
Of hotel properties in Dickinson?
No, of commercial properties. And that, and that's kind of the sticker with the commercial valuation is what is commercial properties doing? Not just what our hotels or what our apartments doing. So we're required to look at them all as one type of property when, when they, they really aren't. And so if commercial properties as a whole are stable or increasing, while hotels and, and, and apartments are suffering because of the, the change in the market, they're all kind of tied together and you have that, that, that fine line to work in between that sales ratio analysis. And that's where, you know, we came last year with the, the ratio at ninety-five percent and your recommendation on what we wanted to do with, with the other five percent that we had, and that's where we applied it to, to apartments. We may, this year, elect to do more for hotels because we haven't in the past. You know, we need to address, uh, mobile home parks and, and metal buildings to an extent as well, at least those that are occupied by oil industry. So we've got, you know, multiple property types that are, you know, income generating and, and struggling to some extent because of the, the changing oil industry. But by the same token, there are properties changing hands and doing that at, at assessed value. And that makes it very difficult. That's, that's what we look at, what the state looks at is what did the sales do? Well, the sales don't necessarily reflect the entire market.
So, so what if Mr. Patel sold this for two million? Then how would we look at it?
Then that would be utilized in the sales ratio analysis. And if there are enough of them that have sold, that's, that sway that median, then we're able to say, all right, you know, we've got apartment sales, we've got hotel sales. They're selling at less than what market value is. You know, and, and now we've got ten or fifteen or twenty percent of a, of a, of a ratio or with our ratio to, to make that change, then we can put it to those sales that are showing the, the biggest decline in prices. That's how we go about doing that. And sometimes, you know, we, we get down there to where they're selling at. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, I mean, it's been a struggle to, to chase that market down, if you will.
My, my, my opinion, I mean, my, my point is, is Mr. Ibock saying it's worth two million, it, it probably is pretty close.
It probably is. Uh, the other things that we have, you as the board have at, at your disposal is we can make that change to those income properties and come underneath tolerance and go to the, the state board of equalization, say with an eighty-five percent ratio. And we run the risk then that they increase everything seven percent to get it back to ninety-three. Or we decrease the income-producing properties, hotels, motels, and give, you know, if that gets us to eighty-five percent, then we on our own increase the rest of the market five percent, which may not be warranted to stay within ninety percent. So that's the dance, if you will, that we, that we have to do to, to equalize this market and, and these values.
Any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Motel Six? And right now, we're talking about the twenty fifteen value.
Correct.
No questions or comments on the Motel Six? I would look for a motion.
Which one was that again? Mr. President, move to deny property ID number zero-eight, zero-zero dash zero-two, zero-zero dash zero-four, zero-zero for year two thousand fifteen.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny the abatement for the Motel Six is approved. Moving on to twenty sixteen, Mr. Hirschfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, the applicant is asking for the same two million dollar valuation that was on the twenty seventeen appraisal. Uh, no change was made to, to the physical building. No change was made in the, by the assessment, uh, the assessing department on any of this. Argument's going to be the same. And, you know, no decrease in twenty sixteen. We did have the decrease in seventeen, but that'll be, as Mr. Frederick says, for next year's consideration. Uh, recommendation again is to deny a change in the twenty sixteen valuation.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Motel Six? Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on the Motel 6? No questions or comments? Look for a motion.
Mr. President. Moved to deny property ID number 0800-0200-0400, Motel 6, for year 2016.
We have a motion to deny the Motel 6 for 2016.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Deny abatement is approved for Motel 6. Moving on, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time, I believe we've got the last properties that are on our list for this evening, and they are owned by Jane O'Realestate, represented by Whipfley. And we have in the audience tonight, Mr. Chad Ziznansky. And I would like to open the floor to him if he'd like to share with us.
Sure. Come forward.
Yeah, my name is Chad Ziznansky. I'm with Whipfley. I am representing the two apartment complexes we have up here in front of us this evening. I wanted to start out by saying, Joe and I've had some lengthy conversations about the valuations and how to go about the valuations. And all due respect for Joe. With that said, my background is, before I became a worked for a large accounting firm, which Whipfley is, I was a commercial appraiser for Fortune 500 companies for over 25 years. I praised everything from nuclear power plants to casinos on Las Vegas Strip, to industrial buildings across the country. I've come across every market condition that there is, situations like what happened here in Dickinson, to the crash in California, to the upswings in New York. I feel unqualified to have an opinion and a value. With that said, as working as a tax agent, obviously, I can't do an appraisal and present that to the board. So, we did submit two appraisals to the board and to Joe, which, obviously, I reviewed. I felt this independent appraiser was in line. He's more than qualified. Obviously, he has 25 years of experience. He has an MBA in real estate finance, CFA, ASA, and go on with his credentials, but he's more than qualified. But what I'm finding here, and what I presented to the board already is it's Joe's opinion that these fee appraisals are discounted. I've seen all the appraisals come here in front of the board. He's had some in front of him here. I think he said there has been 90 abatements. They're all kind of just washed aside because he said it's a different approach. And if the board's taking that as they're not valid, then the two that we presented here would probably fall into that same category. So, I'm not going, I don't think it was a waste of everyone's time for me to go through these appraisals, tell you why I think they're correct, and pick through cap rates and income approach and the cost approach and sales comparison approach and really go into detail here because, with all due respect, I don't know if anyone here is a a commercial appraiser and really could understand it. But with that said, I would have more questions that I'd like. It's my understanding also that these are gonna go to appeals. I've talked to some of the other tax reps and these are gonna go to the state appeals court and be moving forward. So, I want to just get a few things on the record. So, we're gonna go to the county level, state level, and then we eventually go to appeals court, that we have a record of that. So, more what I'd like to do is ask some questions of Joe. And that would be, so I can have it on the record. Unless he asks some questions of me.
Ms. Kreip, is that?
I mean, I'm not sure what...
About his valuation. Support of his valuation. How he came about.
What do you mean, on the record?
Well, right now, on the record. So, I have it, so we have it on... Isn't this on the record?
You mean, it's being filmed and they'll...
Yeah, that's what I mean. So, yeah, so I'd like to state, yeah, I'm just gonna state my position. I'd like to ask some questions.
I don't think we've done that in the past where typically because it ends up getting into more of a debate.
It's not a debate. I mean, I, we, if he has a valuation, he would need to, I'd like to know how he got to his valuation.
That's gonna be up to the chair's discretion. Typically, those conversations happen outside of the meeting between the parties, is my understanding, that you typically address...
So, then, for the record, you're saying I can't even ask any questions about, for this board, so they can understand how Joe came to his values? You're saying I can't even ask any questions about how he came to that value?
I think Mr. Hirschfeld has stated in the past how how you've come to the value of the properties. Am I wrong in that assumption?
Not mine. I didn't hear him say it to this board, how he came to the values on these property.
Well, Mr. President, if you will, I will explain in regards to this property and we can go from there, I guess.
I think that's what we've been doing all night.
Right.
Past years and so on. You want to explain how you came to your appraisal and value and so on? We're here to listen. We have your information here. We reviewed it. If you got anything more to say, we'd certainly listen. And then we have Mr...
Well, I guess, yes, I definitely have some questions I want for the record. Joe had mentioned that there are differences between a fee appraisal and what the assessor is mandated by the state to do. I'd like to know what those differences are, for the record. Because he's stating that to the board, that there's these differences, and that's why the fee appraisal has to be discounted or dismissed. And I think those should be spelled out. Because if you're making your decision based on his comment, we should know what those are. And I'd like that for the record. That's one thing I'd like to start with. I think that's a valid question.
I would allow that. And it seems like Mr. Hirschfeld's comfortable in his explanations, so...
Certainly, I'll explain the best that I can here with the material I have in front of me. I mean, after the hours I've spent in class, I may not have everything at hand and be able to speak to it, you know, chapter and verse, but I'll give you what I can. In regards to this property here, I want to point out, because it will make a difference. The only value being abated tonight is the 2015 valuation. So, again, this property was valued as part of the commercial revaluation by Vanguard Appraisals. Now, they had several staff members here that would come through and list the properties or go through and do the, you know, see what the physical characteristics are, what quality materials are, what the size of the property is. In regards to apartments, how many levels are there? Do they have decks, balconies, elevators? So, those are the things that the initial appraisers come through. And then they have their review appraisers come through and, you know, they kind of drive by it and look, all right, is this property represented on the card the way it looks from the street? And, you know, if everything looks pretty good, you know, then they're satisfied. But if something looks off, or, you know, they probably spot check where they go through the building themselves. And in this case here, and, you know, as I've stated in the past, our models are cost-based models. So, we break them down, you know, what is the cost to build these properties? You know, what are the 2x4s cost? What's the parking lot, the concrete and that? All of those individual items are accounted for, and that's part of the property record card. It's out there for everybody to see. If there's a discrepancy in how the property was listed, the property owner, or anybody else for that matter, can look at that card and say, you know what, you've got this building, it's 200 feet long, it's only 180. You've overstated the value because of that. And that's easy to correct for. And then as part of the commercial valuation, while that was done outside of my office, I couldn't tell you all the steps that were taken into that. However, when it was returned to us, we looked at the statistical analysis of the sales that we had, just like I do in my own office, and how they're returned. And they were returned within IWA tolerances at 98.5%. So, towards the higher end. We always kind of go towards the lower end because the market was trending up and a little bit conservative. But that's how it was returned to us. And so, I'm comfortable with how this property was valued because Vanguard did it in a manner similar to the rest of their properties that they did. And when we do a check of this property here, we had a sale of a 40 unit, so it wasn't quite as large as this, but it was efficiencies. And it sold for $100,000 a unit. And when you take that back, there's roughly 200 or 203 units in these. I don't have the count quite at hand. But, I mean, the year after this valuation was done, it still sold for the same valuation on a per-unit basis. So, we've got the one sale. One sale doesn't make a market, but it's a good little check to how we arrived at this value. And that's why for the 2015 valuation, I'm comfortable with where they're at. And that would be my recommendation to deny. The appraisals that I have before me here, they're draft appraisals, so I don't know that there'll be a lot of change in them. But they also had a date of February 1, 2016. And so, there's information being considered that would not have been available to us, and therefore, I discount those appraisals for that time period. However, we'll continue to look at this. Specifically, as Mr. Ziznansky and I have talked about, was with the predominance of efficiency in one bedrooms in here, has the market demand for those changed to where there should be some obsolescence applied to these? So, that wasn't part of the 2015 valuation and wasn't warranted at that time. But it's certainly something that I will keep in front of me, as I do with all these appraisals, to see if there's anything that the fee appraiser has that I didn't consider and should have. And that's how I review the fee appraisals that come before me. And with that, I guess, you know, we'll go from there. Is there any additional questions or...
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Did you find his explanation sufficient?
Not at all. My question was, what is the, why is the fee simple appraisal incorrect? And he said there's differences between the way they would do it. A fee simple appraisal, you were supposed to find fair market value. It's a snapshot in time at a specific date. You do three approaches to value and among other things. That's what a fee appraisal does. Fair market value is fair market value. And he's saying what the state says, how you're supposed to come to fair market value, is different than what the fee or appraisers' way of going to fair market value. And if there are statutes that differently say, and I know states have done that, I discussed it with him. I know in Colorado, they put statutes in there that say this specifically, you cannot do this as an appraisal, you have to do it. And that does, changes things. I have not seen that here in this state. Fair market value is fair market value. And I want to know what the differences are between how the state says you're supposed to do it, because he says the state says he has to do it a certain way, and what the fee appraiser does. Because if there are true differences, and I've said this along with Joe, then I can, then he has to stick to those statutes and he has to stick to that, to those, that way of doing it. And they may change the definition of fair market value. But we haven't seen that here. And fair market value is what that value is worth at the stated appraisal date, at that time, using the most recent data available. And Joe has mentioned, well, he has to go back 12 months. As an appraisal, we use the most recent data because that reflects what that property is worth right then and there. Now, if the state says you have to use the last 12 months, that changes appraisal theory, that changes fair market value. And okay, then he says right. But I haven't seen that. And I want to know where specifically, you said there's differences. Can you name those differences? And you've told me your approach, how you look at things and how Vanguard appraised the appraisal, but you haven't told me the difference. What is, why are you discounting these fee appraisals?
Well, one of the big reasons is in regards to the income approach, is that I found it difficult for the property owners to share data with me. So, I mean, we can consider it, but without any data, we can't give it any credence. I don't have any data to support the income approach.
Don't you have that in appraisal now?
I have this data that was supplied to me. I don't have it for the other 190 apartments.
But you have it for the appraisals that I gave you? Correct? It's in there?
There, I'm assuming there's some in there. I didn't go through them front and back for both of them.
You didn't review those, you didn't... Okay, well...
They have a February 1, 2016 date on it. My valuation date is February 1, based off of information from 2014.
I don't, yeah, I don't want to debate you. I just want to make some things clear for that. But again, back, what is the difference? And that's all I want to clear. And I can call, what are the specific differences between? You said there's differences. When you were talking about the other appraisals when we were here in front, you said there was differences in a fee appraisal and the way the assessor has to look at things. And my, from what I've known of 25 years' experience in doing this across the country, fair market value is fair market value unless it specifically says in the statutes for the jurisdiction rule that you read, it states that you have to do something differently. And I gave you an example going on here. But in Colorado, for instance, the data period of comparable sales you can use have to be a year prior. That's in the statutes. That's the way the appraiser coming in, doing an ad valorem tax appraisal coming in. He has to use it or that appraisal will be thrown out. That isn't the case here. So, I don't know, I don't understand why you could say these fee appraisers are no good.
The sales that I must review have to come from the year prior, January 1 to December 31. If I don't have 30 commercial sales, then I go back another year. And if I still don't, I can go back up to three years before I can supplement with appraisals.
I hear you. But the appraisals, the fee simple appraisals that you had, that you saw, that came in, they used the most recent data that was available. Why are those wrong?
Mr. Hirschfeld?
And I commented that, and I don't know if he was in the room at the time, that as a fee appraisal, they may not be wrong for what they're looking at, but they're not looking at data in the same manner that I'm looking at.
And that's my question, back to you. Who says that theirs is wrong as yours is correct? You're saying yours is correct. I don't see that in the state. I don't see anywhere. You're saying all these fee appraisers are wrong, I'm wrong, everybody else is wrong at looking at the fair market value, and yours is right. I want to say, where is, where do you draw the line of fair market value?
Let me take a crack at this here. And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna call for the question here. Because I can see what's going on here, and that's why we don't want to get into this here. We were asked presentations, you sent your presentations. We have spent a lot of time and hours on this. And I think here's where we're going, your options. You asked where we get our numbers and so on. Well, we apply our factors, and we have been applying our factors, the same towards every property owner, which we have to. You understand that? Okay. Now, we have been challenged, and your next step would be, if we approve the, or deny the abatement, your next step would be to Stark County. Correct?
I realize the process, but I do want to get this for the record. Because if this goes to appeals court, I've been told by my attorneys that we need to get everything on record. So, that's why, and if you cut me off, that's fine, then it's on record. And that's fine.
I'm not gonna cut you off, that's fine. You're on record. But, right now, we have the mic and the table. And as I was saying, your options. And you know what your options are. You can go to Stark County, because you can file with the county. And you can make your argument there a whole different way if you want, if you find something different than what you're agreeing here or disagreeing with here. From there, if Stark County supports the city, you have, you can go to the Southwest District.
I understand the process. I know the whole process.
Our, a lot of our decision-making comes on what has also happened in the past. And we have been challenged on hundreds of apartment buildings, not hundreds.
Right.
A lot of apartments built. And the county agrees with us, and they get challenged, and it goes to Southwest District Court. And the Southwest District Court agrees with us. So, we gotta be doing something right with the numbers, everything. No one's been able to change them as they've gone up the process. So, you know, I hear your argument, and I hear your defense.
And I'll stop now a little, but I guess the argument will be is, he, from what my, again, obviously, this is what I do for a living, is the argument was not heard at District Court, and it went to county.
But you understand, you have...
Right. So, that's why it'll go, and that's why it will be going to Supreme Court, Right, so that's why it'll go, and that's why it will be going to Supreme Court, where it won't go de novo review, where they will, will have to see the record, and that's why it's important for me to get on record. You understand that, you understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Steiner's done, Mr. Altman?
So, just a point of clarification, because I'm looking at the appraisal report, and it's your opinion or the opinion of the appraisal as of February 1, 2016.
Correct.
But what we're debating here are the values for 2015, which would have actually, if you're doing the income approach, would have been your rents from 2014, which would have been at the peak of occupancy and, and revenue. And so, yeah, I would love to do that exact same thing, is draft a report of February 1, 2016, when rents had dropped considerably, and then come back and say, well, this is what we should be assessed on. Whereas, in the same token, nobody in 2012, 13, and 14 were coming to us saying, our revenues are so high, and you're so undervalued on what we're doing. So, we are constrained with, we have to go back to the data that was provided in 2014 to come up with our 2015 values. Yes, moving forward, did everything drop in value? Yes, it did. Will that be reflected moving forward? Yes, but you can't cherry pick and take February 1, 2016 numbers and retroactively apply them back to 2015.
Can I just comment, because this is a pass, but first off, that's the appraisal date, okay? That's the date, that coincides with the date of the assessor's opinion of value, the same date. That's why that says that. We're talking about fifteen value, this property wasn't even built in 14, it was built in 15, so we're not even talking about 14, you said fourteen values, this was built in 15. So you're looking at fifteenth, fifteenth historical income, and you're taking that up to, up to February 1, 2016, that's appraisal date, okay? So we're not cherry picking anything, that's a date that the appraiser has on there. Now, in appraisal, and just so you understand, I mean, because you, obviously, you're ruling on this, appraisal, you look at historical, but you also look at future income. That's how you do a good job as an appraisal. You take both in consideration, and then you put a value. You don't look just at the past, you don't just look at the future. And if you take, if you're doing an appraisal the correct way, you're taking both of those into consideration. And I'll leave it at that, I mean, I can't teach appraisal here, but, all right...
Any other comments? Do you have any more questions for more?
Yeah, I just have a couple more, just for the record, and he can say yes or no. Did you do the appraisal on this or the assessed value, did you do the valuation on these properties yourself?
For the year of 2015?
For 2015.
The evaluation 2015 was part of the commercial revaluation done by Vanguard Appraisals.
So you didn't do them?
I did not directly do this appraisal.
Okay. Can you tell me, were they done based on lease fee or fee simple?
They were based on the cost approach.
Just the cost approach?
The cost approach depreciation was taken from the market.
So the income approach was not, was not utilized?
It was considered, but due to the lack of data provided, we couldn't rely on it as an approach. That's one of the big concerns that we've had here, is the Board of Equalization, is their income-producing properties, the appraisals come to us about the decreasing, decline in income, but nobody supplies any income to us to consider.
Was the sales comparison approach applied?
The sales comparison approach is what helped to set the depreciation tables.
Did they come to an value using the sales comparison approach?
I don't have that in front of me tonight to be able to answer you one way or the other.
I thought your statement was they just did the cost approach, but, okay. So, so you did not, all right, a couple more questions. And when is the appraisal date of that, when would it be for your, your date of value?
The date of valuation that North Dakota sets is February 1, so that year would have been 2015.
And my last, do you know what economic obsolescence is?
Yes.
Would you like to explain that to me, or just general, in just general terms?
No, go ahead.
I'm asking you, I know, I'm just, I'm asking you. I mean, just in general, I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you to...
Mr. Chair, I think this is outside, outside the scope of tonight's discussion.
Well, the economic obsolescence is a huge factor in the valuation of this property.
I understand, but what...
I believe, for the record, that the assessor should know what that means.
The assessor does, but he's waiting to hear how economic obsolescence, well, would be utilized here to discount my valuation. I mean, the burden of proof is on the apple.
I won't waste more time, I think we have that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? We have two properties asking for an abatement for the year 2015.
Mr. President, the assessed value of 2015 is 23,494, and they're requesting of assessed value of nine million, well over fifty percent. With the information provided, I would move we deny the abatement on property ID number
We have a motion to disapprove the Whitley J.O. Real Estate Properties...
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First apartment complex is denied their abatement. We have a second property, it would be basically the same what you covered on the first.
Yes, it would be, they're nearly identical property, similar quality, same ownership, constructed in the same manner.
Difference being sixty-nine units versus sixty-three units?
I think that's what it is, just a few more units than one than the other.
That's what I see, okay. I was wondering what the difference would be between, you know, three million and, for us, and two hundred thousand for them, it'd be the six units. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would look for a motion if there's no more questions for Mr. Hirschfeld on this property.
Mr. President, based on provided information, I move we deny the abatement for property ID number 1189-0700-0100.
We have a motion to deny the abatement.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the abatement is denied. Is that all the abatements for this evening, Mr. Hirschfeld?
President, Commissioner, that is all for this evening.
All right. Okay, we left off at the Endeavor debt payment. Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld, for enduring that. We have a couple of proclamations up next. The first one up is from the Badlands Board of Realtors. It's a proclamation for North Dakota Realtor Ring Day, December 1, 2017, whereas the Salvation Army, a leader in the faith-based human services, has served in times of crisis to stabilize and transform lives for more than one hundred and twenty-five years in the United States, and whereas the Salvation Army exists to meet the need wherever, whenever, and however they can, and assist approximately twenty-five million Americans annually, including serving more than three hundred and seventy-five thousand people in the Northern Division, which includes North Dakota and Minnesota. And whereas the Salvation Army provides fifty housing shelter facilities assisted more than three hundred and eighty-two thousand people with nights of lodging, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty people with hot meals, and during the holidays provided one hundred and forty-nine thousand gifts to struggling families. And whereas the North Dakota Association of Realtors advocates for the success of its members in partnership with its local boards and association, and the National Association of Realtors, and provides support to the North Dakota communities, and whereas the Badlands Board of Realtors, the North Dakota Association of Realtors, and the Salvation Army have teamed up to help those in need during the holiday season for seven years, with nearly five hundred Realtor and business partner members, bell ringing at near, nearly one hundred kettles in seven cities throughout the state ringing on one day. Now, therefore, as Mayor of the City of Dickinson, I do hereby proclaim December 1, 2017, Badlands Board of Realtors Association, North Dakota Realtor Ring Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota. And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
A motion to approve a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Do hereby proclaim December 1, North Dakota Realtors Ring Day. Pass that down to Mrs. Carlson. And we have a second proclamation. This proclamation is Small Business Saturday. City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation, whereas the government of Dickinson, North Dakota celebrates our local business, small businesses, and the contributions they make to our local economy and the community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently twenty-eight point eight million small businesses in the United States, and they represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all businesses with employees. And the United States are responsible for sixty-three percent of the net new jobs created over the past twenty years. And whereas small businesses employ forty-eight percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, thirty-three percent of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas ninety-one percent of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas seventy-six percent of all consumers plan to go out on one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, President Scott Decker, President of the City, Commissioner of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 25, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
A motion to approve, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, one opposed. Do hereby declaim, proclaim, November 25, 2017, Small Business Saturday. We're done with administration, nothing for...
Oh, for Chair, I believe, Ms. Carlson, were you in the middle of your presentation when we had to...
Oh, yes, you were, yes, you were. Had all kinds of excitement, so...
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just continuing on, this is to do with the Endeavor debt payment, so my presentation is just to show you where we're at, and how we plan on budgeting this, and make the payment, and what the payment is. So my first slide here is, I was just giving you a review, this slide was presented at the legislative, and in 2017, this is the revenue that will be coming in. As I said in the presentation before, our revenue is declining in the GPT, this is the gross production tax revenue. So I just wanted to show you this. This was as of the last two months of prediction, which is, rounds it out to about fifteen million, which is lower than four, 2014, is where we're looking at that. This is the breakdown of the oil impact or the GPT fund, and as of November, we had twenty-four, we have twenty-four million in there, and just, just kind of a step through this, is that we have capital projects, which is a transfer in 2017, is seven point eight, and then with the Endeavor payoff is around five million, bringing us at the end of November to eleven. The forecasted revenue, this would be for the next two months, is figured around seven hundred thousand a month, so that's where you have that plus in there, bringing our balance to the end of the year balance at twelve-nine on that. In 2018, in the budget process, we did approve the general fund transfer of three point six, and then the 2018 debt payment, which is five point three, again, starting that balance at around four million. In 2018, the forecasted revenue that we budgeted is around ten million, bringing our balance to fourteen million to work with. And just wanted to state that in the budget process, there were no big projects forecasted in 2018 for capital, because we just wanted to know, the biggest thing that we were looking at is debt payment. So this is why there was no capital, because we wanted to know where we were at. With that, this would be the debt summary sheet. We are, at the city right now, we're at about ninety-eight million, and then paying off the two smaller loans, as it was through the capital improvement, excuse me, the building improvement fund, and that'd be the two smaller loans, and then this is the amount of four million, nine twenty, three forty-three. And what that is, is the industrial water payoff would be two point six million, as it was in your packet, and then the wastewater line would be around two point two million, and that brings this total to four point nine. And as Mr. Kissel stated in his presentation, the reason we are requesting or recommending this payoff is because every month we are around twelve to fourteen thousand dollars in interest that we are putting onto this loan. I feel that it would be a great recommendation to get this loan paid off, quit putting the percentage of that six percent onto this, and then we would start looking at getting revenues coming towards this. With those payments, then our debt summary for, starting in the end of November, would be around ninety-two million. So my, I am recommending the Endeavor debt payment to be considered for approval, and I'd be here to answer any questions if you have any.
Well, Ms. Carlson, you talked about we're paying twelve to fifteen thousand per month in interest alone.
Yes.
Over the term of those notes, we're going to save close to a million dollars in interest.
Correct.
That's no small amount of change there. I would strongly recommend that we all take a look and pay off those four loans there, and, you know, when we were at a hundred million dollar debt, so to speak, we can get her down to ninety-two within the last year. I think we're doing a pretty good job with the people's money, and I think in the future it even looks better. I think we're a little light on the, hopefully I'm wrong, or I'm right, I hope we're a little light on the ten million for next year.
Yes, we were very conservative, because we didn't know where we were going to be, even though the GPT formula is set for 2018, the state fiscal year is half of ours, so you have to realize that we may be off a little bit, but we wanted to be very conservative with our revenues.
Flip side of that, it takes our balance down from twenty-four million down to fourteen million, I believe, yeah, twenty-four down to fourteen, which is a pretty good chunk, but I think we're all pretty much under the understanding that a lot of our large projects are completed, you know, I don't foresee anything, I mean, we plan for population increase, that's why we built our structures, oversizing and so on, getting ready for the future, where we needed the high balance, you know, the twenty-plus million dollars, so, you know, I think fourteen million is a good one to go into the next year with.
And if you, I didn't put this into the slide, but Mr. Kubis is here to state anything, if you have any questions on what the capitals are that we were looking at for 2018, or what we have left for 2017, if you have any questions on that, Mr. Kubis does have documentation on that, if you're looking at that, too.
Well, in addition to what Mr. Steiner's brought up, we also would have increased revenue, because we wouldn't have the wheel fees that we're currently paying of two dollars per thousand gallons, so you'll see increased revenue from our water sales, our industrial water sales, savings on the interest and debt retirement, and the trifecta.
I think it'd be well over a million dollars we'd be saving by paying this off.
Yeah.
And I'd like to state one thing for the commissioners, just to state that, in 2016, we did pay off a one point two million dollar loan that we did that, so we are doing exactly as commission goals, as finding and working towards debt repayment.
I think it's a great movement that we can do here, I mean, I think we're doing some good budgeting here. With that, I would make the motion that we approve the payoff.
We have a motion to approve the payoff of the Endeavor loan, with a second. Any further comments or questions for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approve the debt payment.
Thank you.
Okay, knocked out the proclamations already. We have nothing from fire or police tonight. Engineering, Mr. Kubis.
Thank you, President Decker. We have two items now. We've added item 6B, which was, they're related, in a sense, that they're both projects that were bid at the DOT last Friday. Two projects on our capital improvement list for next year. But we need to act on them separately. You have handouts that, we just got the email today from the DOT saying that they've opened these bids with the apparent low bidder information that I've included in the memo. Typically, they'll meet on this in a week or two. I think they have the date that they're going to meet on is December 4th. Then we'll actually be, we both need to concur, the city and the DOT, since we each have dollars that'll be going into these projects. So this won't be awarding the bid, this will be recommending award of the bid. The DOT will do the same, I presume, and then we'll start working on contract documents. But the first project is for the 8th Street South project. Our engineer's estimate for that project was recently revised down to $2,230,000. Our budget that we were carrying in our spreadsheet was $2,610,000. The apparent low bid was from Northern Improvement Company out of Dickinson for $2,113,000. It's about 2.5% over what our budget estimate was. But again, on these projects, we'll receive an 80%, roughly 80% federal grant on construction dollars. So on that 2 million, 2.1 million, we'll receive 80% in federal dollars, estimated to be almost $1.7 million. The city's remaining obligation, and I think there's a conflict with the letter you received from the DOT, but the city's remaining obligation would be $422,000. You know, this project, while it was over 2.5%, again, when you put that in the 80/20 perspective, that's really about $10,500 over our share of that project. We only had the one bid on this project from Northern Improvement, like I said. Stephan's reviewed the numbers and would recommend awarding the bid. And we expect the DOT would do the same in the next couple of weeks. With that, I would open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Mr. Kubis, per our discussion before the meeting here, when we're reviewing this here, in the memo that came out today, city remaining obligation 422,771, which looks like the right numbers. However, from the letter from the North Dakota DOT, says our assessment estimated is at 731,185. Let's make sure we get that correct with them in case the numbers change. I mean, we're off $300,000, or they're off $300,000.
The project, and we've talked about this in the past, is capped on a federal level, very, very high, which will never hit that total dollar cap. So I believe my math is correct here, but I'll double check before they have their meeting on the 4th, that our share is only going to be around that 422,000.
I like your math better, too, but, I mean, it's in their letterhead, so.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Kubis on this project? If not, I would look for a motion to approve or deny.
Most approve, Mr. President.
I have a motion to approve the Dickinson 8th Street South project.
Second.
With a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Friedrich? Excuse me. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Project is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Kubis?
The next item is, again, another project that was bid at the DOT, and it's our 10th and 21st Street Trail project. We received three total bids on that project. Our city budget, and we included dollars that we had allocated towards trails from this year's budget and from next year's budget, totaled $1.3 million. We did do some of the work ourselves this year on some areas of the trail that we hope aren't necessarily permanent. So we teamed with the parking wrecks and paved a portion of this trail and eliminated that, it's really the middle portion, probably the middle 20% of the project. And there's some asphalt pavement already along 21st Street if you drive by, close to the intersection with 10th Avenue. That and the engineering dollars we spent were roughly $200,000 this year, giving us a remaining project budget of $990,000. Our engineer's estimate was $720,000, and the apparent low bid was from Wind Construction at $621,425.51. Just doing some quick math, you know, again, with the budget and the bid, if you can go to the next slide. But with the budget and the bid, this is an 80/20 project again, but limited. The cap on this project is $250,000. So we'll receive $250,000, we'll max out that cap for our federal grant. And the construction engineering budget has already been approved by the commission at 106,740. So with the engineer's estimate, it's really relevant here if we have a bid now, but we'd have a remaining budget of $572,000 for trail projects. So I think that's a good thing, we've identified that as a goal. That's just ancillary information today. Right now, we're just looking at recommending award to Wind for $621,425.51. With that, I'd open it up to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? Now I'd look for a motion on this bid.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve the bid from Wind Construction.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Project is approved. Anything else, Mr. Kubis?
That's all I have, thank you.
Have nothing from Public Works or Planning, Building and Codes, Commissioners? Anything for the public or for the commission to know about?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
For the abatements that we had at this, at the hearing for Mr. Royal, we'd sent over a letter of support for the valuation consideration for the denials. And do we want to go ahead and do that again, submit one of those? Are you prepared to?
Yes.
Act on that tonight, or you want me to bring that before you on the?
Would you have enough time by the next commission meeting for that letter?
Certainly could, I provided the one that we had.
This is the topic.
Yeah.
That's what we did before.
We can approve it.
We're hot on the topic, I'd move we approve it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the letter of support for the appraisals.
Second.
With a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved, Mr. Hersfeld.
Mr. President, Commissioner, thank you.
Anything from Commissioners? Nothing from Commissioners? Okay, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have an issue of city concern, please come forward, state your name.
Thank you, my name is Robert Bischof, and I'm the owner of Rody of Your Life Taxi and Courier. And I would like to applaud your support for Small Business Saturday. And you gave a marvelous review of the contribution of small businesses to the United States. I am one of the smallest businesses in Dickinson. And why would you care about me and what do I do? Well, I've been here for about five years, and I have worked every single day for the past four years. Every Christmas, every New Year's, every holiday, every Saturday, every Sunday. I start my day at approximately 5:00 AM, and I work for approximately 12 hours. Marvin is the owner of the Sober Bus, and he handles the evenings. I don't care to deal with the drunk and the disorderly. I love to get people to work. Most of the day, I take people to work or take them home from work. And so I hope that you will consider my proposal. Lyft has come to town. The market cap of Lyft is $8 billion. Lyft operates with insurance of $500,000. Up until last year, all of the taxis, we had a half a million, $500,000 insurance. Last year, you voted to move us up to 1 million, which was very strenuous. Most of the day, I work and earn, after expenses, I make about $5 an hour all day long. And the insurance is one of our biggest enemies. Marvin pays $20,000 a year for the taxi insurance. Mine is $400 a month, which is about $5,000 a year. And I beg you to allow us, the taxis of Dickinson, to be equal to Lyft, to operate with a $500,000 policy. Most of the cities in the Midwest that are comparable to us in size allow the taxi services to operate with a half a million dollar policy. So please do not let Lyft crush us. They have 30 drivers right now. They have the potential to not allow me to feed my family, and Marvin, too. And Marvin, he takes all the drunks home. How many buses?
We run three buses.
Yeah. So.
Please come forward and state your name for the?
What's that?
If he could come forward and state his name for the public record.
Yeah. My name's Marvin Dillon, and I'm the CEO of Camager Services and Sober Bus.
Could you just repeat what you said back there?
I said that I take, on most occasions, I run three buses, or my wife has three buses, and we have another vehicle that we do shuttles back and forth from Bismarck or Williston or wherever, as needed. And we take and run from 6:00 in the evening until about 2:00 in the morning, Tuesday through Saturday, taking people from their homes to the bars, and from bar to bar, and back home again. And before, what was it, three years ago, I believe, you redid the city codes on taxis and shuttles. And before that, it was, we were paying $500,000 premium amount with what state's minimum was. And when we readjust, when the city readjusted it, it was a million dollars. So it doubled the cost of our expenses for insurance. And there, as far as I know, there hasn't been any personal injury in accidents within the city as far as, in the last four or five years that I've been, we've been operating. There has been minor incidences with vehicles, you know, but that's been taken care of by the insurance for the, you know.
Right, well, thank you. I guess.
I'd like to comment, you mentioned, we're at 500,000, you went to, and we went to 1 million, and your expenses doubled. I find that unusual, that your premium was doubled.
Well, the state minimum is 500,000.
Just because it doubled, no, no, excuse me. The 500, the premium for 500,000, you're saying doubled because you went to 1 million. I don't think that would be true.
Just about doubled. My premium went from about $800, $900 a month to 1,600.
I don't know if it'd be just about double because it doesn't work that way with the rate band. But anyway, I know what you're saying. But continue. You mentioned the Lyft drivers. How many Lyft drivers do we have in town? Are they supposed to be licensed with us?
They don't have to license with the city.
Lyft, services like Lyft and Uber are licensed through the state rather than the city because they don't conform to taxi standards. It's a, I believe it's called the common carrier, or some, something similar to that. And that's under state law that they're regulated. So they go through the state procedures rather than city.
One of the things that we talk about is, when you take your bus, how many people do you have in there, on an average?
Anywhere from one person to, I got one bus that handles 20, 21 people. So it can be anywhere from 1 to 21.
Anywhere from 1 to 20, okay. I think the part of the discussion was, was when we went from 500 to 1 million, is that if you take 5, 10 people on your bus, and you have an accident where it's not good, everyone gets killed, it doesn't go far to compensate families when you take 500,000 divided by X amount of, you know, so many people. Families need compensation from insurance company and from the negligent one in the accident. I'm not saying that's you.
And I agree 100%.
So that's why we were looking at going from 500,000 to 1 million, was to protect the people that opt to go into the taxi cabs and so on. I'm not so sure that you probably won't see a bill next year requiring Lyft operators to increase their limits for the protection of their customers. Okay, and their customers' families. So, you know, we can discuss this here at the next meeting or whatever, but I see where you're coming from. I mean, it could be an unfair practice, but I think the state might be taking care of that for you.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is like I say, that we, when you guys went through the redoing of the laws and rules and regulations, you wanted some way of identifying the taxis. That's why you put the city license on the corners, and Lyft has nothing.
Yeah.
They have no name on there, they have no identification, nothing.
Yeah. And you do a nice job, let me tell you. We appreciate what you do, you know, for the city, you guys, and so on. But we have to protect the citizens of.
And we understand that. And, but you can see where our point is.
Oh, absolutely.
We can't bring our rates down to compete with.
And I'll have, I'll have this discussion with a couple legislators this week.
Because right, you know, right now, I'm, I've sat two or three nights that I didn't do anything, that brought in no income. And, you know, whether I sit out there or whether I sit at home, it don't make any difference. But, you know, it's just, you have to have a certain amount of income per day to justify having the insurance.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is that we would, we're concerned on is, you have no control over, it was the $500 transponder fees that we were supposed to pay to take people into the airport. Well, Lyft doesn't have that because they're not marked. They don't know if they're a Lyft driver.
It's not a level playing field, is it?
That, that's, we'd like to have a playing field a little bit level so we can compete. Competition is no problem. But when you have a non-level comp, playing field, it's kind of hard to justify, you know.
Exactly.
And that's, that's where we were.
We'll, we'll take this under consideration, have our staff look at it, so.
Okay, I do appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? So you know anyone else from the public, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.